Someone's doing like that, I have it. Uh, we're ready.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call things to order. My name's Lauren Shackelford. I'm the chairman for the meeting. This is our regularly scheduled Washington County Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting for August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, which will subsequently be followed by the Washington County Planning Board meeting of also August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll start with the zoning board of adjustments meeting and we'll start with roll call, please.
Joe Maynard. Maria Banks. Lisa Miller.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Neil Hahn.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here. Okay, so we have a quorum, so the meeting's officially called to order. Uh, first thing we need to do is to approve the agenda. The agenda tonight, we have one thing on a variance hearing. It's item A, Jennifer Lavender variance on acreage.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sir.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Staff, uh, if you would, please give us a report on the variance request.
Um, this is our vicinity map for the Jennifer Lavender variance project. And this is the site in question. These are the neighbors who were notified of the project. And then this is the site plan and our quick summary of this project. It is a variance sought to build an additional home on a one acre property. Um, the proposed ADU will be a small five hundred square foot home. It is zoned currently for agricultural and single-family residential uses with a maximum density of one residential unit per acre. The purpose is, um, the property owner is needing to be able to more easily care for her elderly mother. And we have received no comments from neighbors and there are no technical concerns at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff from the board members? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it to the applicant. If the applicant is here. If you would, please state your name and address for the record and just tell us a little bit about your project, please.
My one four five, one, what is my address? One five four eight four Riches Road, Fayetteville. And, um, I, yes, I'm wanting to build the five hundred square foot home to take care of my mom. She's seventy-eight and has coliosis and I need her clothes. But not under my roof, which is where she is right now.
I understand. Anybody have any questions of the applicant from the board? Okay, thank you ma'am, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this various variance request under consideration? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Jennifer Lavender variance as submitted.
Got a motions or a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion in three seconds. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you ma'am, appreciate you. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the zoning board of adjustments meeting. Got a motions or a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move on. Next is the Washington County Planning Board meeting, which we will start with roll call, please.
Joe Maynard. Maria Banks. Lisa Miller.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Neil Hahn.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here. Okay, so we have a quorum, so we'll call that meeting officially to order as well. First item for us to do is approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Previous meeting was July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Those have been submitted for review. Anybody have any additions or changes to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Got a motion for approval of the July thirteen minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is the approval of tonight's agenda for the meeting. So we have a, um, make sure I'm looking at this right. All right, so we have a conditional use permit hearing for the county for Meyer Boys Garage. Conditional use permit is item A. We have Belterra Venue and Grounds Conditional Use Permit is item B. And I believe that's all we have on the agenda tonight. Is there any changes to the agenda stated? Okay, any questions, concerns from board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move forward. The first item as mentioned was the Meyer Boys Garage Conditional Use Permit. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map for the Meyer Boys Garage CUP and the site map. These are the neighbors that were notified. And this is our, um, site plan. The CUP is for a single employee automobile restoration business in an existing shop building that is forty by fifty feet. The hours of operation are expected to be nine AM to five PM. And we have received no comments from neighbors. There are no engineering or technical concerns.
Thank you. Questions, uh, board? Yeah, we're having, we're having technical issues. Mine's down as well, as is Philip's, I think. Yeah, okay, all right, well, let's go ahead and keep it moving. They'll try to see if they can get our, our system working here, but if, there's an applicant for this first item here. Hi, if you would please come tell us your name and address for the record and a little bit about the project, please.
Sarah Meyer, address is one eight two six three Harmon Road in Fayetteville. Um, Meyer Boys Garage, as you heard, is an automotive restoration business. It will be run, um, out of the shop on our property, um, operated by my husband Sam.
Okay, so, and I apologize, we're having a little technical difficulty if I ask stupid questions, please forgive me. Is the structure currently on the property as it exists now?
It is, yes.
Have you been operating, has he been operating the shop at this, up to this point?
He has not.
Okay. Um, how many employees do you anticipate having?
Just Sam.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, any other questions of the applicant from the board?
They're, they will be, yeah, they will be longer term projects as he is working through like restoration, not just typical, you know, mechanical type of things. Um, so I would say probably three to four at a time, but his shop building is sufficient to house those, um, as needed.
Any other questions?
What's, I mean, we don't have our maps up, so, well, there's one.
Well, maybe.
How close is it to the closest, uh, neighbor?
Oh, uh, I, maybe to the home, you mean, or just to their property?
To their, well, it's to their home, to where someone lives.
I would say probably a couple hundred feet. I'm not, I don't know, I'm really bad judge of.
That's fine. Okay, so we're, we're getting back.
Parking lot or so?
How many football fields? How about that?
Oh, yeah, good question. Yeah, prob, okay. In that scenario, probably two football fields.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, we're getting the map back up. We apologize, we had a little, little glitch here. Okay, so it looks.
Okay, we're showing them. A track here is the one to the, the bottom. Is that south? I guess it is. South of you?
It would be south, yes.
Is that the closest neighbor?
Yes.
And I assume that's your residence to the north?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, it's a pretty good ways. Shop's forty by fifty. Okay, all right, any other questions of the applicant from board? Okay, we may ask you a few later, but appreciate it. We're gonna open to public comment right now.
Okay.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comments regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it to public comment and bring it back. Remind commissioners, we're kind of a little bit challenged here, but there are proposed conditions, planning conditions, conditional use permit, um, which we may be able to get on the screen, but, uh, not to allow vehicular fluids to drip into the grounds. Filities shall not contain salvage non-driveable vehicles, excuse my language, adhere to the hours of operation Monday through Friday, nine to five. Any additions or expansions of this would have to come back before. So those are the recommended, recommended conditions of approval by staff. To the board.
Is there a fence around your property?
Not around the full property. We have a personal fence behind our home, but not around the property of the shop.
I'm gonna recommend approval with those conditions applied.
We got a motion for approval as presented, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you ma'am, appreciate it. Okay, next is Belterra Venue and Grounds Conditional Use Permit. Staff report, please. Sam, thank you.
Absolutely. So this is the Belterra Venue Grounds CUP. Um, this is the vicinity map for the project. I'm gonna go over this like once, once more. So this is like the site map of the proposed site map of the project.
Hey, Sam?
Yes, sir.
You're dead up here now.
Oh, nice.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, this is very touchy. I'll take a few seconds. So, as a reminder, the only reason you're seeing like two, two properties there, because normally we notify the neighbors or like use the parcel number for the property to send like neighbor notifications. Once, once they establish the split, it's gonna get down to like one forty acres like lot. So the only reason you have too many neighbors being notified here, because the proposed, uh, two parcels, when they set up like the CUP, once that split is gonna shrink to like just like one, one lot. And that's basically the proposed, uh, property split, so that's eventually how it's gonna happen. And it's gonna be like forty acres like lot. And the project, the proposed project is only on that like seven acres like, uh, blue, blue area.
Okay.
Uh, so, and this is the site plan for the CUP. Uh, as you can see, it's only happening on like seven acres or less, and it's a CUP sought to build like a venue and event center about like ten thousand square foot, uh, utilizing about seven acres on a forty acres track of land. The venue is located at seventeen nine nine six Bethlehem Road, uh, Washington County Road two thirty-seven in Winslow, Arkansas. The venue is approximately two miles from Highway, uh, forty-five and about one and a half miles from Devil's Den Road. There will be approximately hundred twenty-four cars, parking spaces provided with no less than four, uh, regular handicap parking spaces and one for like then accessible like space. The maximum capacity will be about three hundred person or less. The business will have two employees with the goal to have a total four full-time employees in the future. Hours of operation will be from eight AM to four PM, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to eleven PM, Friday and Saturday, and eight AM to ten PM on Sundays. The main business days will be Fridays and Saturdays mostly. Uh, we received thirteen comments from the neighbors, uh, two phone calls that in opposition, one phone call in support, six emails in opposition representing nine neighbors, and one email in support. Um, this map shows the, um, blind corners, like the concerns and where the venue is approximately is gonna be located. And most of the comments, um, against the concerns is like about li- light pollution at night, noise from vehicles and like music, uh, depreciation of like nearby property values, environmental and health, uh, issues, increased dust and vehicle like exhaust emissions, incompatibility with the surrounding agriculture residential areas and uses, traffic safety and lack of county road services and maintenance, uh, existing dirt road and its ability to withstand like increased traffic. So this map shows like the neighbor comments that we received. Let me just like reiterate, the, um, the yellow line is the three hundred, uh, feet required like to notify the neighbors, uh, from their both properties. Uh, the gray side, uh, is the project site when the split is done. Uh, anything in, um, purple is the neighbors that they're being notified. And the one in red, the, the people in opposition, the one in green is the people in support.
Okay.
So most of the people like, uh, in red, they're also like the people they were like notified. And we have lots of like planning conditions. It's mostly like for safety and, um, the technical reviews and everything we receive back from the engineers and like the other, other like stakeholders from the county. And of course, like enforcing the, uh, hours of operation and like the number of employees on the property. And if anything that need to be changed, they have to come forward with, um, any like CUP. But definitely if this is approved, they have to come back with a, an LSD with like all, all the, all the extras.
That was the question I had. So if this is approved, we still have to come back with a pre LSD?
Yeah, and all the, the engineering like comments and all of that is gonna be, of course, a cover.
So we're basically looking at just the conditional use permit to allow the.
For now, yes, sir.
Operation tonight, and then we'll get into the actual plans and specs and layout and all that if this is approved.
Definitely.
Okay, that's what I wanna make sure. All right, any other questions of staff? I'm sorry, yeah, of staff from the board? Okay, is the applicant here? If you would, please give us your name and address for the record and.
We, we do have the applicant and the property owners, so we're gonna hear from both of them.
Sounds great, thank you.
Hi there, Nathan Crouch, Balloon Associates. And, uh, I have been, I submitted the application, but our applicants are definitely here and they're going to be, uh, speaking in just a moment. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that, that Sam had mentioned. Uh, ten thousand square foot wedding venue, uh, three hundred occupancy catering kitchen only. Uh, fire station, there's a fire station one point four miles away, you know, so as far as safety goes and everything, you know, there won't be a huge travel distance, uh, for that in case that should ever come up. And, uh, yes, the, the Rams have contracted with us and, and our engineer is working on putting together the large-scale development plans for this right now. And if this is, uh, successful, then those be coming through pretty soon. If need be, I've got some, some, uh, I wanted to talk about some of the opposition that had come in, but it might not be the right time right now, but let me go ahead and introduce Ms. Carolyn. And, uh, she'll come and talk about her venue.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carolyn Ram, and our current address where we live is eight forty-four Seasons Drive in West Fork. As Sam said, the property in question is one seven nine nine six Bethlehem Road in Winslow.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, Nathan, we'll do the technical side if necessary, but I wanted to provide a bit of feedback about the venue itself, about the project. Um, it is a ten thousand square foot building and it will, um, house up to three hundred clients. It is not for concerts. It is not for anything truly other than weddings and professional meetings. If, you know, I could see if eventually what we would love to do, once we get started and can, is to allow, um, three meetings for, um, the five oh one C three corporations to be able to come in and do something where they don't have to pay, but it allows them a, a nice area to be able to come in and, you know, and, and meet and do what they need to do and save their money for other expenses. Um, I did want to say, and bear with me as I tell you this, um, the seller of the land, um, I know there's been some opposition to him that I've heard about, but one thing I really thought was cool with him was before he would even consider my offer, which I offered him more than he was asking per acre, because I've looked for six years for, um, the right property, for, um, the venue. Before he would even consider that, he actually went and spoke to the neighbors in the surrounding, some of the neighbors, I don't know who, but in that surrounding area. He spoke to the people that live immediately across the road. There's one family that lives immediately across the road. Their names are Hutchinson. He went and spoke to them and I believe a couple others and, um, made sure that for the most part, most of them were fine with it at that point. He also required to meet me. He didn't care about the money. He wanted to meet me and my husband before he was willing to just sell the land. He's very particular about the land. He has a hundred and ninety-five acres there. The other hundred and fifty-five is actually closing next month. The people that are buying that hu- the additional one hundred and fifty-five acres there in full support of this. And they said they thought it was a great idea because obviously we're putting a lot of money into this. We're investing a lot. And, um, we will keep it in pristine shape. And so he understood the reality of that. I did wanna bring that up. Um, I'd like to address some of the concerns with, uh, that the neighbors have. And I did want to say, um, some of, I heard some of the opposition was that I had never reached out and it was because the seller had done his due diligence. And I thought that was very unique wherein he wasn't worried about the money as much as he was the compatibility. Um, I heard a lot about noise. I, I read a lot about noise. And I want to say to the committee, uh, my husband and I are making a significant investment to make sure that the sound system, obviously is interior only, but we also want to do it where it's surround sound interior, so that there's not a need when you have someone there and they're having a reception. It's not a need to have the noise loud anyway, because you're all the way around. Typically, when you're at a venue, and I've done over a hundred weddings now, and typically at these venues, you know, you have these DJs come in and they have these two speakers that they set up and it is so loud, it is ridiculous. That's not what we're going to do. We will have it where it can be kept at an, a noise level that is pleasing so that you can enjoy, but you can also speak. Also contractually in the contract, it will say that the, um, venue staff member will always be staffed. We have a venue manager that, and her husband that will work full-time for me from the beginning. But the venue will always be staffed with someone because, you know, we are putting such a big investment into this. And we don't have investors and we are not rich, but we believe in this, and so we want it to be nice in the area. Um, we have required in our contract that if the venue staff employee feels that the noise level is still too high, that she, we can tell the DJ we'll bring it down. We have the audio system. We will have a remote control that we can work that as well. I don't see that being an issue, but I did want to bring that up because, um, there is no other venue in Northwest Arkansas that has that system. But we want to be sure that we're doing our own due diligence. No amplified music outside. We again will have a portable system for the officiant and the bride and groom, and if there's music, they have to use our system. We've required that because we want to again be able to maintain that. Um, we chose to buy more acreage than we needed, far more acreage than we needed, because A, we want the building itself. When you look at the building, if you see it from the road, we'll have it completely as covered as we can actually. But if you see it, it's going to look like it is a white house with black trim. And that's what we decided to do. But we bought the forty acres, or we're trying to buy the forty acres so that it is secluded. It's secluded from any neighbors. There is, um, I know the neighbor that's within three hundred feet, the Hutchinsons, um, but it's even secluded from them. There's a long road that goes into the seven acre pasture. And we wanted our clients and their. And we wanted our clients and their guests to be able to drive through, a meandering drive if you will, and what they see when they get to the building is nothing but vegetation, landscape, there's a forest in behind it, all the woods will remain. And so it has an acre, one point three acre pond, and we love that, but it will not be, the venue will not be by that. It will be completely, you'll see it, but you won't be there because we didn't want to impose a building of that size in the open acreage. So there's a large field that we're buying that is open, and we could actually put the building there and it would be a cheaper investment for us, but we chose not to. We want it to be secluded, and we want to be able to be as compatible with the community as we can, as, and as understanding with the neighbors. Again, the one neighbor that is right there, she's very supportive of it, and she's been great from the start, but we understand. The serenity, there was quality of life, someone, someone had talked about the quality of life. We've cre- we've created a venue, we actually redid the plans when we found this land because I had an idea, but I didn't think it was conducive to the property itself. I didn't think that it would complement the area. So we actually hired yet another architect to be able to redesign the building. It is a one-story building, that's why it's so big. It's cheaper for us to build a two-story building, but I, when, the only place you're going to see it is if you're coming up on the, the southwest corner of the property, is where you might see it in the distance. And we did not want a two-story building standing there. So we completely redesigned it and had it stretched out more so that it would be compatible. We did not want a modern look, it was more modern before, we chose not to do that so it would be compatible. And we are investing a ton of money to clean up the land and to beautify it. And the neighbors that are here even, I'm sure that they will attest to, it, it needs a lot of work. There is a home that is completely dilapidated and it needs torn down. The pond has been let go, so we are working to keep it as natural as possible, but spending a lot of money to clean the area up as well. Obviously, we need to do that. There was someone that said something about the owners do not live there. My husband and I would live there if we could, but we have an agreement. We bought acreage, and I want to say this, we bought acreage with some family members twenty years ago, and we made an agreement not to ever move, and we will not move because of that agreement. However, we love that land, and we want our investment taken care of, and we want to be able to make sure that we're out there as much as possible, obviously. So what we have done is, in the LSD, if this is approved, you will see it's, there will be a home out there, and it will be constantly lived in by the venue manager and their husband. I have a young couple that has been by my side for the, for the last five years because she believes in what I'm doing, and they will live there full time, and we will have an upstairs suite for the bride and groom on their wedding night. That will be what it is for, nothing else. But there will be someone that does live there, but this, that is the only reason we are not going to move in the area because we, we just can't. The venue will not degrade the area's landscape in any way. In fact, it will only improve the land that it is sitting on. It will be enhanced greatly. There are ruins of a barn, and I think it's from the New England area, it has that look. It's brick with a mortar on the outside. The owner, the current owner of the land felt like it was a nuisance for his cowl, so he destroyed the roof on it, but it's from the early nineteen hundreds, and we're keeping the ruins. We want to keep it as, like I said, as natural as possible. We have to do a lot of work on it, but we're keeping the ruins. One of the big issues that I heard was the dust, and it's a gravel road. And I have made phone calls, we have been in contact with the county road department. And I heard what the neighbors had said, and I thought about it a lot. And my goal was to immediately make this my full-time job. Nowhere near ready to retire, this will be my retirement, but I wanted it to be my full-time job. But I felt that it was far more beneficial for the community, for the area, for the properties, for the owners, and for my business, ver- very frankly, to work with the county to do some sort of hard surface on the road. And the venue is going to be willing to pay a portion of that. It's a lot of money, and I, so I won't be able to work there full time, which was my dream, but it's worth it. So I'll have two or three years that I won't be able to be there full time, but I will have, as I said, a venue manager. But we want to address that. Our venue will, you know, be more beneficial by having a hard-surfaced road. I think that anyone would know that property values do not decrease when you have a hard-surfaced road, so it's not going to be of an issue on that at all. But we felt it was beneficial, we felt that, that would alleviate the dust concerns, that would alleviate the pothole concerns, et cetera. So that is something that I am in the works with, and I will pursue that aggressively so that we get that done. Alcohol was another, another concern. I do not drink, and I will not supply alcohol. However, if you have a venue, you have to allow alcohol at some level. There is one other venue in Northwest Arkansas, very well-known one, and that's the only one that's going to do what I'm doing, but I feel like it's beneficial. Alcohol will be able to be served only by a licensed bartender, and the alcohol will be limited to beer, wine, champagne for toasting, obviously, and then what's called a signature drink. And the bride and groom choose one drink that they want to be served. A licensed bartender is required to monitor who he's serving. They will not be serving at the table, the, the people will be coming to the bar to get the alcohol. We also will contractually in our contract, we will be able to say, you no longer serve this individual. I can't sit here and say I won't have alcohol because I am ruining my business, but we are doing all the due diligence that we can to ensure that it's handled. In the one hundred weddings, plu- one hundred plus weddings that I've done, I will say there was one time that there was one gentleman that was inebriated, and we had to stop that. And we did. Other than that, it's, it's social, and it's typically not someone that's coming out to a wedding to get drunk, but it's, it is possible, so I wanted to address that. The other thing is, when it was talking about tailpipe emissions, someone had brought that up, and it was talking about one large outflow of traffic and one large inflow. Our main times, and when the, when the venue is open from on Mondays and Thurs- through Thursdays, that is to allow for tours. That is to have tours, and like I said, the venue manager will be on site eventually when we can afford to put the home there, and so that is to allow tours, but ninety-nine percent of the business is going to be on Fridays and Saturdays. When you have a, a wedding there, typically the bride and their bridal parties and stuff start at eight o'clock, right? And then throughout the day, you have people coming, you have vendors coming, you have family members and parents coming. The last hour and a half is when a lot of the traffic comes, but it's not all at once. It's not a huge influx, and it's not a huge outflow. Same thing happens with receptions. Yes, we will have capacity for up to three hundred. Typical weddings in the area at this price range are two hundred to two hundred and fifty people. But it won't be, I mean, wherever you go, there are tailpipe emissions, right? But it won't be something that is just a constant flow where my neighbors cannot get in and out of their properties. And I just want to reiterate, we will be improving the land, we will be getting rid of the vegetation at the front because it has a terrible fence there, putting up a, a beautiful wood, black wood fence, but we are going to put vegetation right back up. We need this to be as secluded as possible for ourselves, for our benefit. We are marketing this as nature's beauty, right? And your dreams are going to make this come true, and we need it to be secluded for our clients and their guests and for the neighbors. I don't want, if they don't want to see it, I don't want them to. I think it's going to be in a beautiful addition out there. I do not believe noise is an issue, going to be an issue at all. And I think that's it. Are there any questions for me right now?
Any questions, the applicant from the board?
Okay, it's great, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Joe?
No, sir, it is not. It will be, it's an LLC. So my husband is a veteran, and it's in, in, under him, and it's an LLC.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're getting fussed at for not turning your mic on. Okay, this point we'll open it up for public comment. Remind you, you have five minutes to speak on this item. If you want to speak in favor or opposition, if you're representing a group, you have fifteen minutes. I would ask everybody to be respectful. We definitely want to hear your opinion and your feedback, but if it's been repeated several times and, you know, I'm sorry.
It's three minutes individual, ten minutes for the group.
Sorry, my bad, three minutes and ten. Different, two different commissions and two different timelines, so I apologize. That's, that's city and not county. Three minutes for an individual, ten minutes for, if you're representing a group. This time, if you would like to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address, and let us know your thoughts.
Yeah, my name's Eric Gregerson, and I live, I live right next door to this proposed venue. And my, my biggest problem is Bethlehem Road. I mean, you saw those, that picture with the two corners on it. I mean, that, that's the worst spot, and it's a bit misleading. I mean, we call that dead man's curve. And, but the whole road is a blind, it's a blind corner. Every, everywhere you go, it's, you can't see what's coming. I mean, it's, and it's a gravel road, it's dangerous. My wife got ran into right out in front of our property. It's, if people aren't paying attention, you're gonna have an accident. It's just gonna happen. And, and when you're talking about putting that many cars on it at one time with people that aren't familiar with the road, I, I believe you're gonna have a problem. And it, and as far as being, being gravel, the, the dust from that many, if you got a house next to that road and the, the dust from all that, from a hundred cars going by, it's gonna drive you, it's gonna make your house unlivable. You're not gonna be able to live there. Yeah, she said she was gonna, you know, hard top the road, but it also needs to be made wider and, you know, put a line down the middle of it, and, and that, that should be done before any, any venue ever happens there. And I tried to come up with some, some ideas of how, how it would, it would help the people that live on that stretch of road. And I, I couldn't, I couldn't think of anything because it'll make the, the commutes more dangerous, it'll hurt property values. I mean, can you imagine trying to sell your house and somebody coming over and, and there's nothing but a thick coating of white dust all over the grass, all over the trees, all over your house? I mean, I'd turn around and leave. And I, I just, I just think it's a, a bad idea. I thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Susan Schneider, I live at one seven seven three seven Bethlehem Road. And I'd, I'd first like to say, I'm not anti-development. I mean, who doesn't love weddings? And I, I certainly wish the petitioner well. But as, as was, has was pointed out, I was one of the person who sent in some email comments, and it's, as Eric mentioned, the road is very curvy, it's very steep, it's very narrow. And I'm just really worried about how we're all gonna feel someday when there's an accident of somebody coming home from a wedding after having a few beers, maybe tailgating even outside the, the venue, and they take the curves too fast. And that's gonna happen whether the road's paved or whether it's dusty. And that's, that's really a concern. When I was driving here today for the meeting, I came home, came in specifically for the meeting, and I passed one car on Bethlehem Road. We're both in a cloud of dust. The other car stopped so that I could proceed, and we wouldn't have to worry about hitting each other. There are just areas of it that are just very narrow. And then there are areas that it gets really wide, and there's lots of gravel on it. And so if you're not familiar with the roads, you kind of get going fast on those sections, and all of a sudden there's a turn, and somebody's in the middle of the road, and there's an accident. I do appreciate all the assurances that the petitioner is trying to provide. I think she's probably very sincere in all of that, she certainly sounds as though she is, but none of those insur- assurances are gonna be enforceable, or very few of them would be enforceable. Once the structure is up, lots and lots of money invested in this property. I hope it would, would look nice. But there are gonna be a lot of financial pressures on this facility to be used to its maximum in order to pay for all of the money that's been spent to invest in it. And that's gonna make, maybe there will be some, some events that aren't initially planned, and then it's too late. Then we either go with the additional plans, or the bad outcome for everybody would be if there was a, the, the risk of failure, and then we've got a ten thousand foot square venue out in the middle of nowhere that hasn't worked, so.
Thank you for your time, appreciate your input.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I thank you for the opportunity, my name is Christopher Kelly. Susan is my wife, we both live at one seven seven three seven Bethlehem Road. Some of you may know it as Rose Hollow. It's a beautiful area. I have submitted a letter sent to you by email. I'm the fellow who wrote about running on the road, even though at my age, and if you saw me running, you would call it running. But I can tell you that from the experience of running on that road every day for close to twenty-five years, it'd be the twenty-fifth year, I see a lot, I see a lot in terms of driver behavior. One thing I'm concerned about that hasn't been mentioned, I see the roadkill. And what I'm particularly concerned about is if that road is paved, I think there are gonna be some advantages to that, even though I understand that a paved road can also have higher maintenance costs than a dirt road. I think I've seen that on Union Star, it was not paved. When we moved to Bethlehem Road, it's now paved, but it's getting a good bit of traffic, and there are a lot of, a lot of potholes there. But I'm, part of the amenities of living out there is, is the wildlife. We've had bear, deer, of course, wild turkeys, and I see the, those crushed on the road, and they can't come here and speak. So that's one thing that I'm gonna speak, and if, and that's a, a human amenity too, it's something, something enjoyable. So you can hear a lot focused about the road because that is the backbone of that community. It's, it's what carries all of us in and out and provides some recreation as well. One thing I, I've been pleased about, I've noticed an increase in bicyclists, bicyclists on that road. Running last Sunday, heard, heard what, coming up pretty fast with an unusual noise, and it was a, a gravel bike, really clipping along. And I've seen other groups of cyclists, bicyclists out there, which I think is nice, and it's to enjoy that road, and I want to enjoy it safely. It's one thing to have a fire station to come to the wreck, followed by the ambulance. We just don't want to see that. We want to see that road to be safe, to be lightly traveled as is appropriate for its location. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, Mr. Kelly.
I'm Amber Hutchinson. I live at six seven two North Lawler Lane here in Fayetteville, but my brother and I own property at eighteen thousand four Bethlehem Road in Winslow, which is the front-facing property to the, the project in question. I'd first like to say that I am one hundred percent in agreement with my neighbors who have spoken earlier. All of their concerns are valid, and they echo mine. I have lived on that property or been a part of that property since I was born in nineteen seventy-nine. I have seen the degradation of the land and the property, the buildings on that property since my father sold it. I have watched traffic increase over the years, you know, population increases, Northwest Arkansas is exploding. On any given day, we have hundreds, literally hundreds of cars going up and down the roads. I can only imagine the amount of traffic that would increase with each I can only imagine the amount of traffic that would increase with each event. I am also concerned about the wildlife. I'm concerned about the improvement to conservation efforts for the land for native plants in the area. I would like to see what plans there are to bring it up in line with USDA conservation efforts. I would also like to see a Washington Water Report as to how the wastewater will be treated or how it will be managed to have 300-plus people on that site when so far, all we have are residents, you know, maybe there's six to 10 people in any given home. And now this one place at the top of the mountain is going to have 300-plus people.
Technically, that would be more of the large-scale development aspect when we get into that. We're, we're talking just about the use, the conditional use of this on this property tonight.
But in the long scheme of things, where things fail, pipes fail, then what happens? You know, is, is it going to be a sewer? Is it going, is it going to be a septic tank? Exactly. What happens then to the fallout if something fails? I would be interested to know if there are any blackout dates, any particular weekends where there will not be an event. You know, families would like to enjoy holidays, you know, in, in quiet. And if there aren't any plans, what kind of control are they going to have for noise outside of the building? You can only control what you can control. People can be loud, they can drink, they can do whatever outside of the building. How is that going to be mitigated? And likewise, with the traffic and the paving of the road, is the county going to assist with paving the road all the way from Highway 74 clear to the other end of Bethlehem Road to Union Star Road? Or is it only going to be paved from Highway 74 up to this point, up to the event, venue? And then the rest of it going to be dirt?
That will be addressed in the large-scale development also.
But these are all questions that I have now.
Gotcha.
That should be considered, you know, for future meetings. I'm not opposed to development. I'm not opposed to wedding venues, but I am deeply concerned about having the solitude and the peace that we have come to know out in that area.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else like to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Hello?
My name's Kendall Hayes. I, my address is 17273 Wind Creek Road. I do have property that joins a corner of this proposed, and then I lease and run cows and do hay on Eric Gregerson's place. So my concern is, I have cattle right across the fence at this, it looks like it's right there to me. So am I gonna have people wanting to take selfies with my cows across the fence? And my, me driving my tractor hauling hay through these blind corners. Like, wedding season is hay season, so that's when I'm going back and forth. That's my concerns.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hayes. Thank you. Anybody else like to make public comment on this item? Okay, if not, I'll close it for public comment. Board, you got questions of applicants? You want to talk to applicant on any of this? Nathan, you want to address any of the technical, again, I don't want to get into large-scale development. We're not ready to talk about road improvements at this point because that's not part of what's in front of us. But do you have anything specifically to address for the conditional use permit?
You know, it, I've been involved with a, a lot of these wedding barns as they've come through the county. And they, and I called it Wedding Barn because that's what they typically are. And, and nobody wants one to come in. Everyone is always afraid when everyone comes in. But I called the Sheriff's Department and said, how many complaints have you had in the last handful of years on any of these wedding venues? Zero. You know, dust is always a big, a big factor, you know, it's, it's, it is, it's a dirt road. And it's a public road. That's all I really wanted to come up and say is, it's a public road, and the road department isn't in the business of building dangerous roads. No doubt, the, 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 the road has to respond to the contour of the land, and the road department make the best road that they can. However, it is still a public road. And so that's all I had. If y'all have any, any questions for me on the technical side?
Representatives?
Or if you'd like to talk with, with the Rams as well, they're, they're definitely here for.
To the purview of the board.
No. Nathan, how far is the dirt road from the main highway?
2.0 from the interstate?
Yep. About, I mean, how much dirt road?
About 1.8.
Thank you.
Is that from 74?
Yep.
Okay.
Short stretch up Wind Creek, hang a left up Bethlehem. And if you weren't to hang that left, on the right is where that fire station is. And there are a couple of other businesses along Wind Creek and Bethlehem Road.
Okay, anything from the board for the applicant? Appreciate it. All right, to the board for action.
I've got a question about our, our process. We are at the point of approving a conditional use permit for these folks to operate this business at that location.
Yes, and that's, we have the attorney here who's a lot smarter than I am, but it is a conditional use permit that goes with the applicant for the property as proposed. It is not for approval of, it's basically for approval of this conditional use of a venue on this specific location. Is that fair?
If you may, the CUP runs with the land. As long as the use is, like, stays the same, it runs with the land. If the use is changed, the CUP is invalid.
So it would be for a conditional use permit for a venue on this property?
Understood. Now, when, when is the process, if, let's say, the road was the concern? When could we say, you can only use it for this if the road is improved to X standard?
The next step would be a pre-LSD and then a large-scale, a pre-large-scale development, then a large-scale development. And that's where you would address off-site improvements, you would address sewer, you would address fire suppression, all that sort of thing.
But where do these folks know when they should invest more or it's, or not? Because we could, look, for example, we could say the CUP is approved. And then when it goes to the LSD portion, we could say the road must be four lanes straight with dust barriers on both sides all the way to the venue. And then, you know, they would be shot down. So how, how does this, this work?
So, and, again, I'm glad we have a county attorney here and staff, but, so we've done one other wedding venue that there was a road improvement, and it was basically an agreement that that person in the road department made. It was not a requirement of the approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think that would be outside of our purview as far as off-site improvements to require that as part of the large-scale development pre-LSD. Now, obviously, if that agreement is made between the applicant and the county road department, then that's gonna be beneficial, in my opinion, for approval from this board for what they're proposing.
Right, so the, the concerns that the neighbors have are, you know, real legitimate, because I drive these same roads. You know, the dust, the corners, the, the blind corners. You know, I get that. That, that's the concern that I have at this point. Use of the land, it's their land. They should use it for whatever they want to use it for. But the safety of the road and, and the latent dust that we're talking about, not just occasionally a car comes by and, you know, oh, well. So that's my concern at this point, approving.
So we're not, we're not speaking for the road department, but they, yeah. Yeah, the, the road department, they normally have a schedule of lack of maintenance and improvement on luck roads, and that's up to them to decide when this is gonna be on their schedule.
Understood.
When we, when we go through, like, the large scale, they were gonna say, okay, that's what it needs to be, and this is how it's gonna be, and within, like, certain amount of time. And this is when they know when this is gonna be fixed or, like, be improved to the standards.
I just have a question. How do they know that it's gonna be paved? Is it?
That's between them and the road department. I mean, that's their schedule.
What if it doesn't agree? What if they don't agree?
I, that, I don't know. That's, like, the road department question. And that's what happens, like, when we do the large scale. We sit all together and, like, we go, like, through the checklist, and yes, no, yes, no. And they know exactly when, when and what, and, like, the kind of, like, type of service is gonna be, and the schedule for it, and how much.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Actions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Beltarav venue and ground CUP.
Got a motion for approvals or second?
Second.
We got a motion and approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Appreciate it. Okay, I believe that's the only items that we have on the agenda for tonight. Any other county business for us to discuss at this point?
Nothing yet. It's like, it's still, like, we're, like, in the process. And for the floodplain updates, we're working diligently with the legal team so we can get, like, to the new ordinances. The, the state and the federal government FEMA has issued, like, a final letter of determination for the new floodplain maps. They're gonna be in effect on January 25th to 2024. So we need to come up with, like, the ordinance and get it approved through the quorum court before that date. And once this happens, it's gonna be reflected in our database.
Okay. And again, I get my municipality and county hats backwards, but we do not have, as planning board, we don't have any action on that. We don't have to make a recommendation on the ordinance or anything.
That's a quorum court. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So it's, we're just waiting for that to be done, and then we'll institute it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, anything for the good of the order? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you.